All right, it is six o'clock. It is Monday, May twentieth. We'll call our meeting to order and start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we have a roll call.
Simonsen.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Next we have approval of the agenda. Motion by Coolman.
Second.
Or, excuse me, motion by Colister, seconded by Bennett. If we have no discussion, take the roll.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Simonsen.
Yes.
All right, item five is public participation. Is there anyone in the council wish to get up, talk to the council? Anyone on Zoom? And if not, we move on. Next we have presentations. And it is the first quarter building department report.
Good evening, council, mayor. I'm here to guide you through my quarter, first quarter, property maintenance and building department report. I'll start out with permits. We had twenty permits in the first quarter this year. Down by eleven. We had thirty-one last year at this time, in the same time period. But we actually gained more money. So we had bigger projects happening this quarter, first quarter. Got a couple houses, well duplex and a house started. So that's gonna be a fun time here in town, which is, you know, it's always good to have a house being built. So I'll do some inspections on that, and I'm still learning those things. In the rental world, we have, I've been kinda doing rental inspections throughout the year, instead of doing them in like a two-month period. So I've done forty-nine already this year. I've got a couple landlords on the line to set up some appointments for me. So I hope to have the three fifty kinda spread out through the year. Just makes more sense for me to do that. Obviously, first quarter property maintenance stuff is usually hectic, because a lot of things start popping up. Trying to keep up with that, along with our, you know, main characters that we deal with almost yearly, or maybe haven't dealt with yet. Obviously, those things are a process, like we know. I do have two properties under charges right now. One's actually gonna get dismissed because of, the owner's deceased. We have to re-figure that out. Just found that out today. And then obviously, the properties that we all know about, I keep trying to work with, or get to that process where we're involved with court proceeding, which are several of them that's probably gonna get there this year. Just not getting a lot of cooperation that way right now. But there's a lot of property owners that are doing things, you know, that I stop knocking on the door and it gets done. So that's, that's what we want. I shouldn't have to knock on the door, obviously, but a little reminder sometimes does. And obviously, in the report, I've got, I've been very busy with rezoning and planning zoning, rezoning, and zoning board of adjustments this, this first part of the year. So hopefully that slows down a little bit, because that takes a lot of my time. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Hey Brad.
Yes, Josh.
Any insight on why building permits are down?
I don't know. I mean, obviously, there's interest rates up, you know, and materials, you know, some materials down, some materials up. You know, it just depends on what you wanna do. Construction lumber is decent now, but like fixtures and bathroom kinda stuff, you know, door handles, handle pulls, all them things are still up there. So, and it's kind of a wait and see what happens in the economy right now, I think, too. So that helps, you know, people's decisions on not pulling the trigger on building something or doing an addition or something like that, too. So, really has a lot of factors in it.
And how's the feedback from the rental inspection program with property owners? Is that going well still?
Hopefully, yeah. Getting some decent response. As far as the inspections go, I mean, we have a pretty weak safety list. And, you know, that it doesn't take long to do an inspection. Obviously, there's issues sometimes, and I, and I try to go back, or they, they take pictures and stuff like that. Some certain outlets, or, or, one's the big one, is the screens on the windows, you know. A lot of people don't think that's a problem, and it is usually. Somebody breaks a screen and, and they have to fix them, and that's hard to do now, because a lot of the windows aren't fixable, so they gotta put a different window in sometimes. So, give them some time to get that done. But yeah, there's, you know, those types of things. As far as the landlords, they're all cooperating fairly well with me, and I, I believe I had one that, I had a hard time getting hold of, and finally he came, came around and we did it, did all his in one day, and it was good, so, good.
All right, anybody else, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Brad. All right, move on to item number seven, which is a public hearing. And it's a public hearing regarding plans, specifications, and form of contract for the construction of the Prairie Creek Gully and Stream Bank stabilization project. Go ahead.
Yes, mayor, council. I've considered versions of related action items the last couple months, and this tonight, along with the resolution item officially approves plans and awards a bid. But the engineer's estimates for this job was approximately nine hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. We ended up at nine fifty-six as the lowest responsible bidder out of an entire bid set. Most of them were north of a million dollars. Considering the one point one eight six million dollar limit on that revolving loan fund source, this is right where you wanna be, especially with your WHKS contract that's out there, plus this construction bid, and who knows what might happen. But I think this is right where you wanna be, and at this point, this is, open item is mostly for a public hearing, and if there's members of the public that wish to comment on these plans, or this project for that matter, that's their opportunity to do so now.
Okay. Anybody in the public wish to comment? Anybody on Zoom?
Motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion by Colister, and a second by Lyon to close the public hearing. Go ahead and take the roll.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Simonsen.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
And motion passes. Item B is a public hearing regarding fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget amendment.
Mayor, council, I don't have anything further to add to this beyond what we've already reported in prior council action items. This just certifies the final re-estimate for this current budget year to the state.
Anybody wish to address us? Anyone on Zoom? Motion by Colister to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a second by Rick Earl. There's no discussion, take the roll.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Simonsen.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item eight is our consent agenda, consisting of the minutes of the May sixth, twenty-twenty-four regular meeting. Our bill's payable through May sixth, twenty-twenty-four in the amount of one million, three hundred forty thousand, four hundred two dollars and fifty-nine cents. The April finance reports, renewal Class C retail alcohol license filed by Onward Fine Arts Center, the renewal of a Class C retail alcohol license filed by the Fraternal Order of Eagles, area number thirty-eight sixty-six, renewal of a Class B native wine license filed by Make-A-Splash, and a new Class C retail alcohol license filed by More Local.
Are there any bets on the amount of the bills?
Bets?
So moved.
I see your side. You know, I sat here thinking to myself, are they gonna ask a question? And I did not suspect that would be it, but the levy first payment is in there, plus a wastewater treatment plant, which is why that's so large.
We have a motion by Colister, seconded by Alinger. Any more discussion? Then take the roll.
Coolman.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Simonsen.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. We have no old business for tonight, so we move into item ten, new business. And A is a discussion and possible motion adopting amendment to Meadow Park subdivision plans to allow for double frontage sidewalks only on the Western Avenue side for Western Avenue fronting lots, and restricting the lots number one, two, thirteen, and fourteen driveways access to Forest Drive.
Mayor, council. Now with this one, our city attorney recommended that we consider a council action by motion. We did speak about this at the Public Works Committee, as I've detailed. It did kinda draw what this motion would, would look like, and it's in front of you. I did not think it was necessarily professional enough and designed to be in your council packet tonight, but the, the meat of this motion is essentially allowing the double frontage sidewalks only on Western, because it fronts Western Avenue, and then it limits driveway access to lots one, two, thirteen, and fourteen. Those would still front Western driveways coming in off of Forest Drive, so that it's not too close to that Western Summit intersection. So, outside of what we discussed at the Public Works Committee, there's still concerns about how to, I guess, make this the best living environment for the subdivision. That's why I've put some visualization of where trees could go, and that's one direction we did receive at the Public Works Committee, was consult about what the best application for trees would be that's a good grower, has the right canopy, doesn't get too thick of a trunk to become a visual impediment. You know, some years down the road, I assume that as this gets built out, it will get more congestion, even on the west side, if those continue to be considered by investors. But we took a stop sign out, perhaps at some point in the future that could be considered again. If speed's an issue, you've had really good success with radar speed signs. Speed tables are an option. Overall, I would just say that the Public Works Committee meeting, it went okay. It wasn't a perfect agreement, but it was a pretty good explanation about why things are the way they are on this build. The developer was present. Brad was present. We had two members of the public that were concerned, and we talked out this motion before you tonight.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Colister.
Second.
Seconded by Rick Earl. Any discussion? If none, then take the roll.
Alinger.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Simonsen.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman.
No.
Okay, but the motion still passes. Uh, next is item B, a resolution approving a twenty-eight E agreement between the City of Macochka and Jackson County Conservation Board pertaining to ongoing care and maintenance of the water quality sponsored project. Go ahead.
Mayor, council, this one's pretty, well, this one's pretty simple, in my opinion, and it's required by the DNR, and this is a pretty easy discussion with the Conservation Board, that the city's not on the hook for any ongoing maintenance expenses as it relates to water quality improvements out at the Prairie Creek Recreation Area. The capital investment is ours, because it has to be. There's no expenses on you in the future. Just, that's kinda the beef of the argument. There's prairie seedings that have to be maintained in the future, and that's entirely on the Conservation Board.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Colister.
Second.
Seconded by Bennett. And is there any discussion? Then take the roll.
Bennett.
Yes.
Simonsen.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Item C is a resolution declaring an exemption to the municipal utility transfer replacement tax for certain transformers by the city, by Macochka Municipal Electric Utility. Go ahead.
Mayor, council, I'm, I'm not sure if you were able to understand what it meant, or had the chance to read the resolution in the packet, but as we understand it, because we've officially adopted franchise fees for MMEU, they called it a franchise fee for years. It was not technically, it was a surplus share. And so they had been reporting this to the Department of Revenue under, and it was just not done correctly. Now that we've had attorneys in it, they're recommending that we pass this declaration as an exemption, so that when they do the report this year, it's done correctly, because it will change next year once they've done that franchise fee, and they don't wanna raise any eyebrows at the Department of Revenue. That is in short form what this is about. The attorneys have recommended it for both parties. MMEU's already passed it. It's now on your desk at this point. Any questions? I might be able to answer on this.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Colister.
Second.
Seconded by Alinger. Any discussion? Then take the roll.
Simonsen.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Item D is a resolution accepting a bid from Earig Works LLC in the amount of nine hundred fifty-six thousand, seventeen dollars and fifty cents for the Destination Iowa Prairie Creek Gully and Stream Bank stabilization project.
Thank you, mayor, but I have nothing further to add.
So moved.
Motion by Coolman, seconded by Rick Earl. Anybody have any discussion? Take the roll.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Simonsen.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Item E is a resolution amending the current budget for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you, mayor, same thing, nothing to add.
So moved.
Motion by Lyon.
Second.
Seconded by Bennett. Any discussion here? Then take the roll.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Simonsen.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Item F is a resolution approving change order number three in the amount of eighteen thousand, eight hundred fifty-one dollars and eighty-three cents for the wastewater treatment plant project. Go ahead.
Thank you, mayor, council. I sincerely wish that every change order I provided in proposal to you was eighteen thousand dollars, especially on a sixteen million dollar project. I think Public Works Committee would tell you, we've, we've had a Google Sheets tracking about what's, what's gone through my email, and I've tested that out, and we're within four hundred dollars of the contractor's estimates along the way. So this is really quite accurate, and I think WHKS has done a heck of a job so far.
So moved.
Second.
Who made the motion? We have a motion by Lyon, seconded by Rick Earl. Do we have any discussion here? Then take the roll.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Simonsen.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Item G is a resolution approving change order number five in the amount of thirteen thousand, nine hundred forty-six dollars and sixty cents for the facade east project.
Thank you, mayor, council. This, this change order's not, I guess, as easy, but as I understand, the bid documents and what was there before, those, those panels came off that face Platt Street, and they discovered red bricks and like cinder block units, and they don't really have a great solution here besides adding this adhesive and getting this paneling up. That's a little bit more expensive, and so the city cost in this, and this entire agreement's twenty-five percent. All parties think that this is the best way to move forward. The owner agreed to it, and the city's the last stop here to consider this item. I just don't think that this would have ever been discoverable until they pulled that paneling off.
So moved.
And a motion by Lyon.
Second.
Seconded by Bennett. Anybody have any discussion? Take the roll.
Coolman.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Simonsen.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Item H is a resolution approving Iowa Economic Development Authority Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Agreement. Go ahead.
Thank you, mayor, council, good news. We, we did receive the energy efficiency grant, which is, which is good. High energy fluorescence, but still fluorescence, so we expect that at some point in the future, once we sign this agreement, if it's approved, we'll return with some, I don't know if they'll be designing this, there's a webinar that's on this in a couple weeks, but there will be some sort of offer for construction or replacement on this in the future. But again, this authorizes this agreement, which is ninety percent state paid. I think it's a remarkable program that you guys get to enjoy some energy savings on in the future.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Alinger, seconded by Bennett. Any discussion? Take the roll.
Alinger.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Simonsen.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Item I is a resolution approving professional services agreement with WHKS for a Destination Iowa Disc Golf Engineering Services in the amount of thirty-four thousand, three hundred dollars.
Thank you, mayor, council. Again, related to the Prairie Creek Destination Iowa project, this agreement is from WHKS and proposal. We really, it's part of the project, but we have a problem here, because we need to get to construction documents. We need it biddable, which the Conservation Board's not gonna be able to do. They're not gonna call us for help on this, we can't. And we're kinda stuck in a position here where we can qualify this forty-three thousand, excuse me, this thirty-four thousand, three hundred for reimbursement. But to finish out the rest of the project, and this portion is a large part of it, we need to get to that construction offer phase. I don't think we'll ever be able to get there without an engineer saying this is what you need to do. And so they take the design, they take the exact GIS locations, there's, there's tree cover involved at this. If you, if you've walked and hiked Prairie Creek closely, there's a heck of a bluff along the creek on the southern side that's incorporated into this, and there's, uh, there's some pretty heavy considerations. So along with the engineering of this services agreement, there's also a couple site visits involved. And so, uh, I don't know that they'll use thirty-four thousand, three hundred, but this was their estimate on what it would take based on the scope of work that we described on a site visit meeting with them about a couple weeks ago.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Lyon.
My second.
Seconded by Rick Earl. Is there any discussion? Then take the roll.
Bennett.
Yes.
Simonsen.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Item J is a resolution extending an agreement and contract for fire protection from Macochka Township. Motion by Colister.
Second.
Seconded by Bennett. Any discussion? Take the roll.
Simonsen.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Item K is a resolution setting up public hearing for June third, twenty-twenty-four at six PM on proposed sale of real estate generally described as a portion of parcel number one four six one eight one nine four zero one zero one eight zero zero, also known as one thousand five east Platt Street, approximately seventy-two thousand, three hundred square feet in size to Samantha McLaughlin in the amount of thirty-six thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars.
Thank you, mayor, council. This stems from some conversation we've had as city council about what to do with the city's real estate and trying to position it for, for resale, so we get things back on the tax roll. This did go out with Sam McLaughlin's permission. I didn't wanna be too forward in my language without her permission. There's plans at the Timber Center to expand someday, and this acquisition is part of that. At some point, that will occur. I'm a pretty determined woman, and I assume in three years, there may be another structure there to incorporate some, some events with their, with their weddings. So I think that's something exciting to look forward to. Will be a good facelift for the east side. This is simply exercising a, a resolution to set a public hearing to gather input on it. We still have a couple things to clean up in our contract. That will be released as a public document to you before the next council meeting for full consideration.
Okay.
So moved.
Motion by Colister, seconded by Coolman. Any discussion? Take the roll.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Simonsen.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Item I is a resolution approving change order number one in the amount of six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars submitted by Earig Works for the truck storage building steel replacement project.
Thank you, mayor, council. What occurred here is Earig Works consulted with Frank Ellens on this project, and most of this project is cutting, getting to rotten structure, replacing that rotten structure, and then re-tinning. And conversation occurred where, why aren't we just replacing all the steel if it's just a little bit more? And that's the investment that's proposed to you tonight. It's a six thousand, two hundred and fifty addition. The capital improvement plan line for this has the funds. The next highest bidder on this original project was thirty-four thousand, so we're still below that. But if you have any further questions, I would direct them to Frank Ellens on, on what else could occur here.
I didn't think about it earlier, but does that change the scope enough that we should go back out for bid?
I did not consult with an attorney on that question. It had a thought, I had thoughts of that. Judy and I did discuss it. That's an option here tonight, is to vote no, and then we can rebid the project as a steel siding replacement. But at this point, you know, if you, if you want me to come back with this item on the next agenda and table it after talking to an attorney on that question, if you think it's worth it, we can do that.
I don't know what anybody else, I just posed, I didn't think about it earlier. I was talking to Frank about this, but then as I read this, I'm like, that could change it enough that we could have some problems, but I don't, I mean, I, I'll go either way, if no one else has any concerns.
I don't have any concern with it.
I don't either, I'm comfortable moving forward.
We have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Lyon, seconded by Coolman. Any discussion? Then take the roll.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Simonson.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Okay, that motion does pass. Item M is a resolution approving construction engineering services agreement with McClure Engineering in the amount of three hundred twenty thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars for the airport runway extension project.
Mayor, Council. If you remember my last agenda regarding this project, I told you this would be one point six or one point seven million dollars, and the engineering services is part of that, and that's what's in front of you tonight. If it brings you any comfort, there's a third-party review done, the FAA does, and they have to do this independently and estimate based on what the agreement is with the city. And they came very close to what McClure Engineering has offered here tonight. And Adam Thompson, who we remember from our last discussion, is available for questions if you have any. This is for three hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and seventy. I don't have anything further to add to this other than that we'll get started, assuming approval here, and we'll submit on the next item, the grant application, assuming all that goes well. This will be a deep fall project and end of spring. So do you have any questions for Adam Thompson or I?
Okay. Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Rick Earl, seconded by
Alinger.
Alinger, okay. Any discussion? Take the roll.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman.
Yes.
Alinger.